Call this meeting in order, stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, thank you for coming out on such a lovely day. If you'd be kind enough to silence your telephones, I'd appreciate it. First order of business is minutes from our last meeting. I'll entertain the motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting unless there are corrections or additions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve in the last minutes of the last meeting. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Partly heads, Mr. Corum.
You first. Say that about your people.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've been busy putting coves in. We've got four down already. Got four more that we know of that need to be put in. We're waiting on the locates until we find out where the wires are at. Five hundred's closed right now, but we're gonna try to get it open this week. Concrete, it's cove collapsed on us, but we'll get it open as soon as we can. Been having five crews out patching, of course, when the terrain and can't really do much patching because the holes are full of water. Got our spray patches down, getting them ready. Building's got new doors on it, down there at the shop. And then that, we're just doing the best we can. Got a lot going on.
Have they done much on the interior of the building yet?
They're starting to put the walls up how they was yesterday.
I spotted down today they were pouring the floor and there wasn't anybody standing around unless they were waiting on the concrete to come out and shoot it.
No, I actually, they was there at 5:45 that morning and I had to go back at 1 o'clock the next morning to let them out. They work from 5 till 1 the next morning to get that done.
Good. Any questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Mr. Gray?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for waking me up.
Yes, I called you first thing this morning. Of course, we had no power in the courthouse. Things were back up and running. Our generator for the health department didn't fire. It cranked and didn't come on, so I had piles come down there and they got it running. But they're gonna, it's due for service, so they're gonna check it out and see if they can set the crank up a little longer because it's a gas generator, natural gas generator. We think it's taking too long for it, it cranks too many times before it comes on, so they're gonna adjust that. The last couple of weeks I've been working on air handlers at the jail. I spoke with, I got to you about it before. It's just bearings going out, something that we do in-house, but it's just, it's getting to be a job. We're having to tear them apart.
He's, what Mr. Gray's referring to, the air handlers for the jail are original to the jail and the cornerstone of the jail was laid in 89, so what, 24 years?
Twenty-four years, yeah.
So...
And when they replaced the new equipment, they replaced everything except the, and what it consists of is mostly bearings, motors, and belts. And it's just getting to the point where all the shafts are wearing out and where the bearings are not lasting, so you've got to replace them so often. Talking fifty bucks a bearing when you replace them, there's two in each unit. It's getting expensive. And once the shafts get so bad, we have to have them made, special made, and it's getting to the point where we can't get them made. Not too many, about no place local can make them, so we have to go out of town to try to get them made. But we'll keep it running as long as we can. Right now, we're okay. Guy on the steps emailed me earlier last week, or later last week. Was supposed to start it on the steps this week, of course, with the rain, you can't. So, I'm looking to probably get that started as soon as the weather breaks or since this rains out.
Okay.
Other than that, I have anything else.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Jenna?
I've got two things to request today. The first would be the approval to sign a participation agreement with a company called GovPayNet. And I actually have a folder that they dropped off for me if you want to pass it down, kind of explains it. But basically, it is an agency that works for the government agencies in collection of fees. It's basically a credit card machine. It gives probationers the option of online, onsite, or phone calling fees through credit card, debit card. I'm hoping that we can increase our collections of fees and make it easier. There is no cost to us at all. There is a slight fee for the cardholder to use the service. It's charged to the cardholder. The, I did email the participation agreement to Chris Appel. I understand he's unable to be here today, I believe.
His grandmother died and he's at funeral today.
Yes, and I was aware of that. So, I did email that to him, but he probably hasn't had a chance to look at that yet. So, I'm asking for the approval of that pending upon his okay, that everything looks okay in the agreement. There is a copy of that participation agreement in the folder also. It also gives probationers 24-hour access to pay. Family members can pay directly if they're wanting to pay for their family member. I did request that the company, they were talking about depositing directly any transactions. Since we don't have a bank account, I requested that we have a check actually distributed to us with the breakdown of the transactions. We would basically not enter transactions till we receive the check, enter it like we would be taking it out the window, and then we would turn that into our daily deposit at the end of the day to the auditor's office. And I don't know if there would be things I need to get with Gert Trudewell as far as with the auditor and setting up that situation, but I'm aware that that needs to be set up before we get this going. I think that's it as far as that goes. Do you guys have any questions on that?
It's pretty straightforward.
And hopefully, I'll report back in six months about the increase of payments made.
So, to recap, okay, this is basically you're setting up an agreement with a company to allow your user fees that are assessed to your clients to be paid by either debit or credit card?
Correct.
Or, I don't know, electronic transfer of some kind?
Right.
Okay. And the fee associated with that goes with the credit card user?
Yes. And there's a page in there, I believe, with the participation agreement. I don't know if that was in, it is. And we, I would post this in the probation department. It's a 3.5% minimum, $3.50 service fee, or it's 5% of the amount.
I might also...
The total amount.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I might also suggest that, you know, Mr. King, and have it put on the county's website under your department. That way, it's advertised at least two different ways, please.
Yes. Yes, well, and I'm just assuming to, we have one right now where they can actually call 1-800 number. That's the only way to do it. We have a company. However, I think actually having the credit card swipe machine there in the office, that they're more likely to use it. And there's actually a piece of equipment that will keep it private, so the person would key in their personal identification number, we wouldn't see it. It would be behind a lock-secure window, so we don't have anybody messing with it. And the participation agreement goes over all the not being held responsible for any bad transactions or anything like that. The company will take care of all that. They're bonded, so I don't think there's any issues.
Are other agencies using this company?
Honestly, I did not check with Indiana with anyone else, and I can do that. I can follow through that and ask for some.
Okay.
I know that they did go around to the sheriff's department, like here locally. I know they went to some other departments, but I don't know if the departments took a look on it or not.
Okay. What's the will of the board?
I make a motion to accept this proposal and an approval from Chris on the contract.
Second. Motion and a second to approve this pending the approval of our county attorney. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. And I'm gonna give this to you with the signature page as marked, but that's the agreement. And I can, once I get an answer from Chris Appel, yeah, you can hang on to it then if you want until I get the okay.
Is that all?
No. Of course not.
I knew it couldn't be that easy.
I'll be quick, though. I always say that in a talk forever, but we did, our probation officers have completed our firearms training with M.A.T., three city police, certified firearms instructor. We did the classroom section. Last week, we all received qualification for the firearms. In the midst of that, we do have department-issued firearms. It was suggested that we get the night sights on that. Two of them already have them, but they're so old that they're faded. And I actually relied on Ryan Siggers, the probation officer, to kind of do this research for me because I didn't have time, and he knows more about it than I do. We did, he did call three different agencies or providers to look into that. The only one that actually responded with a specific amount was Wolf's Gun Shop, and it was for $67. It was for the purchase of the equipment itself. And Jim has offered to mount those without cost. However, because he's a city council member, I wanted to bring it up with the commissioners to make sure that there's no considered conflict of interest or anything to that extent, so I...
So, you have to make a motion first?
Didn't know if you had to make a motion, or I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention?
Four aye at $67 apiece?
Yes.
Okay. Well, presents an interesting question. I don't know.
I do know Ryan contacted Chris Appel, and he suggested that we come to the commissioners' meeting. So, he was made aware of it, and I think it was just to publicly state that, that we had gotten, we had tried other places, he was the lowest. I don't know if maybe there's a form out there?
There's, excuse me, there is a form that I think can be filed with the State Department accounts, but it's such a small matter. It's, that would be Mr. Wolf's responsibilities, I understand it.
Okay.
So, I tell you, we can, we can go ahead and approve this pending the approval of the attorney, okay?
Of the what?
Pending approval of our attorney, okay? Just like we did on your credit machine, we can go ahead and do the same thing, but you can't worry anything until Chris gives us the okay.
Okay. I kind of think he verbally already told Ryan, so I'll send him an email and a request to get something back to make sure he's aware of that and get something in writing that he's looked that over. I can do that.
We like to purchase locally as much as possible, and it would certainly be to our benefit if he's the lowest bidder and everything.
It's basically at cost, and then he's doing the work for free, so...
We certainly would rather give Jim the business and somebody out of town if it's possible and doesn't break any ethics rules. I make a motion to accept this.
Pending approval of the attorney?
Pending approval of the attorney, yes.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the four night sights from Jim Wolf pending the approval of the attorney. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Since you have a full house, I'm done, unless you have any questions.
I don't. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. King? Good morning.
Been kind of running around like a chicken with its head cut off, so I'll be quick. One thing is just getting the reapproval for hiring Michael Wilhelm for my part-time position. I go to the council tonight, if you guys still approve that.
He passed his background?
Yep. He had clear background. We haven't run fingerprints yet, but that doesn't, until my one does those when we start, so...
All right. I make a motion to accept the recommendation from Michael Wilhelm as your part-time assistant.
Second. Motion and a second to approve Michael Wilhelm, excuse me, Michael Wilhelm, correct? Michael Wilhelm is your assistant? Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That is a, the jail has been having problems with the information going back and forth from Spelman to CPD going very slowly, so they want to get their internet speed sped up. It's an increase of $20 a month. I think they said they were gonna pull it out of commissary or one of their budgets, so I just need to get a signature on that. The primary advantage is in the upload speed. It's getting two times faster.
So, they're just, they're paying for it out of their...
Yeah.
You need a motion on that, Frank?
Just a motion for me to sign it, approve it, approve it for me to sign.
I make a motion that we approve for you to sign this.
Second. Motion and a second to allow me to sign the contract for MetroNet for the jail. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
The final thing is we're having problems with just network stuff this morning where the power went out for so long this morning, our battery backups just couldn't keep everything on. I mean, they're supposed to keep things on for an hour or so, and I think the power was out for about two, so we had a bunch of equipment shut off. So, I'm kind of running around playing Mr. Fix-It everywhere all at once today, so...
Okay.
So, any questions for me?
We won't keep any, all right?
Okay. Thank you, appreciate you. Apple shelter, Mr. McLean?
Morning.
Morning.
Really don't have anything new. The proposal that we gave you the last meeting, I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any questions about those changes that we were asking to make.
I'm assuming you would start this like May 1st?
Yes.
Okay. I checked, I think May 1st falls on Friday, if I remember right, Thursday or Friday.
Here's your calendar right here.
If you accept the changes, I would like to have something on Facebook or our page up there, and then something in the paper or whatever to let people know that the changes are coming.
I make a motion that we accept these changes that Ellis has recommended.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the changes recommended by Mr. McLean. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Just for the public to understand, there are some procedural changes and some fee changes. The fee changes are actually, will be lower than what they are currently. Also, the hours will be changed to where there will be no Saturday hours, but Friday evening hours will be extended by two hours to try and compensate for that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Whitaker?
The commissioners have before them a calendar with all the commission meetings. There are two days that will need to be changed due to the primary election date on May 5th and also the general election date on November 3rd. The commission will need to do an approval to move their morning meeting date on those two days back to Wednesday, May 6th, and respectively, November 4th, which is Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m. because of the election holiday.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the calendar dates as recommended by the auditor.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the change of dates as mentioned by the auditor. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
The second item is there's a position description, the auditor's office. I need to hire a part-time property tax person that will work a maximum of 28 hours per week. The job description is in front of you in writing. I am moving forward this week to put this in the newspaper and do the required posting so that I can begin interviewing and make a decision by next month for hiring this position.
And the funding for this comes from...
The funding for this is already appropriated in my 2015 budget.
Okay. So, you're wanting, you're wanting us to...
Just to be aware, and I'll bring as far as any applicants for serious consideration to the commissioners for approval by next month.
I think your office does enough work to justify this.
Yes, sir. That's all.
Anything else? Mr. Sudol?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I have bridge inspections. We have Phase II bridge inspections complete, and Mike Aldrin here from Butler, Furman, and Cypher has five copies of the bridge inspections for Phase II, and we have several special inspections that are required, and then also three maps over there saying that's what's on the wall. I don't know if you want to distribute us, distribute it now or put them in your office?
To save time, because we have some other things that need to be addressed, could we just put them in our office, please?
Okay.
And is there anything that needs to be signed off on as far as the bridge inspections or...
Sign off, you mean besides bridge inspections?
Yeah.
Well, we have, I have another item concerning that, that there's a supplemental required by federal government as far as inspections, like Bridge 25 and Bridge 90, that they'll be required to inspect them every year now. And they've sent me, Butler Furman sent me a letter for the commissioners to look at and the cost. It's about $8,400, but it's 80% reimbursable, so our cost would be around $1,800, which there's enough appropriated to do that, but we have to get approval from NDOT for that, so I just will let you know in your approval to send it to NDOT to request for a supplemental agreement for a bridge inspection.
So, the yearly inspections are gonna be mandated?
Yes, they're mandated by the condition of the bridge.
Okay.
They said affected this last January 1st, they, they rated a certain number would be required to be re-inspected every year. And they're running, the average one is $560 per bridge, and there's one special one, which is Bridge 25, and it's a little over $1,000 for that bridge.
Is it because it's historical?
No, it's the condition, probably the underwater, the pier's condition. And so, that adds up to about $8,400 altogether, which I think are the figures. Most of them are the posted bridges from 13 tons to 15 tons, most of them posted are culverts, the tank cars. So, I've got the list there and I went through them all and checked out the figures, so I'll have to send it in with your approval to NDOT to have them approve it, and then they'll inspect them this year. Next year, it'd be, we'll have to re, we have to take another request for proposals from different consultants that continue the inspection, so starting in 2016.
Okay. So, you need our approval today to send those in?
To NDOT.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we send the reports into NDOT.
Second. Motion and a second to allow the surveyor to send the motions into NDOT. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
I got three quotes for a GPS unit, rovers, and I didn't know if you wanted me to bring it in today, or I need to get it to additional corporations' request, I think by the 15th, for made consideration by the council. I have about 18, $11,800 in the cornerstone fund, so the quotes came in around 15,000 to 20,000 for the equipment.
Okay. Explain exactly what you're talking about.
It's a new surveying equipment since the existing surveying equipment was purchased in '68, '72, and Jerry had been using his equipment surveying, so this is using satellites and modern technology for locating points for engineering projects, for ditches, for section corner perpetuation. We saw a cemetery location, some of the pioneers' cemeteries you wanted to locate in case they get lost again, and we'd have a record where they were at. Let's see, the ditches, I think I mentioned, but it'd be used for surveying.
I suggested to Mr. Sudol, they recently located a pioneer cemetery on the property of Mrs. Sarah Plow. It consists of one headstone and the base of another, and it's between the tree line and the river. So, if we have a really heavy flood, that could be gone, and locating the exact spot of it again may be very difficult. So, what I've suggested that in addition to, and he's very nicely volunteered to, over a period of time, GPS all of these, all of these pioneer cemeteries in case they are destroyed by some reason, in addition to the fact that the equipment he has is antiquated. He has a coroner's perpetuation fund which has 11,500 in it.
700.
700. And you need approximately another, roughly another 400?
Well, no, closer to 20, 18,000 to 20,000.
Total?
Total. So, it'd be about 7,000, 8,000 more.
Okay, all right. And you're going to approach the council for an additional appropriation for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the equipment that you looked at, you looked at two or three different companies?
At three different manufacturers.
Okay. And you're requesting that our approval to proceed with this?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we allow Warren to proceed to purchase new equipment, which is definitely needed.
Second. Motion and a second to allow the surveyor to pursue, pursuing the GPS equipment that he's spoken about. Question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That's all I have today.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. County Attorney's not here, is the council representative here today?
Yes.
Okay. We'll proceed to mail. Do you want to, I'll go ahead and do these.
Okay, I have one case, Mr. Mc...
Okay. We did receive a letter from our attorney, excuse me, our insurance company, Wilson, Lawson and Myers, the carrier, I should say. There were two different items. One dealt with the fact that, as I've spoken in a previous meeting, that volunteers are covered under workless comp to a... covered under workless comp to a certain level. And one of the conditions is that they have to be on a master list that the insurance company has for obvious reasons. And the other piece of mail deals with the fact that, as the public knows, within the last few years, our liability insurance has fluctuated tremendously, usually up. As things stand now, and you're talking about this kind of stuff that can change overnight, okay, we're looking at a very, very healthy reduction in the premium, perhaps as much as half. I say perhaps, things can change overnight, but we're looking hopefully at saving some money. And we have tried to, I sat down with the insurance company several months ago, and we tried to come up with some ways, which is why we're fixing the steps out front. Insurance company thought that was a possible liability situation, so we're going to repair it. And the commissioners in January, I believe, did a tour of our facilities to try and see exactly where our trouble spots are. We've got a lot of them, we just don't have enough money to cover all of them, but we have to kind of prioritize. So we are trying to make an effort to eliminate some of the causes for lawsuits, which you'll never eliminate all of them, it just doesn't work that way.
All right, two pieces of mail to present through my office. One is from the State of Indiana, Department of Local Government Finance. Assessor Kathleen Rhodes, Treasurer Mary Hires, and Auditor Gertrude Rediger received this letter to just inform the county that those three offices, using the required state software for our property and other financials, have passed a Phase III testing that each county in the State of Indiana is required to go through. So we're really happy to let the commissioners know today that the county's in compliance. Everything is working well with our vendor system for those property taxes that we need to track and maintain among our offices, so we're really pleased to announce that. Second, the Indiana Department of Transportation presented a letter to county officials to give local commissioners and council members the opportunity to voice in on local road funding. And this is something the commissioners may have already received, particularly Commissioner King at the local road school that she attended. But this letter will be forwarded to the commissioners, I think I did forward that by email yesterday when this arrived, so that you can read through that and decide if there's any language or any letter or voice that Fayette County wants to send back to the state NDOT. That's it.
Thank you.
Just as a matter for the public, I believe that they are starting to work on the stretch between Vine Street and Fifth Street, between there and Liberty. So if you drive between here and Liberty for the next few months, you're going to experience some delays, probably even some blocked roads. So the official detours go down to Burkeville and back up 101 to Liberty. The unofficial detour is Alphana Road. So I would suggest if you choose Alphana Road, which is obviously the shorter route, that it's really a narrow road there, so drive with caution. New business, I'm sorry?
I'd like to mention that the speed limit on that road is now 40 miles per hour and 20 miles per hour in the town of Alphana.
Okay. Jenna?
Just a quick question on the insurance premiums. Is there a prediction of the timing of getting them reused?
No, well, it would be when our new policy, our new policies do, June 1st. So we'll take sealed bids, and we're going to have to go by what's presented to us and make a decision at that time.
That's not on the individual insurance, Jenna, that's on the county's insurance.
I misunderstood.
I apologize, it's for our liability insurance.
I was going to have some exciting staff over there, but take it back.
Susan Sexton?
Sorry.
That's okay, I'm going to clarify.
Hi, my name's Susan Sexton, and I have a nonprofit organization. It's drug awareness, we try to motivate people to change their lives. We're in Connersville every three months with drug awareness events. The reason I'm here, we are planning a fundraiser through Unchained Praises, that's the name of the organization, to have a recovery walk. We try to show that addiction affects everyone, not just the addict. And so we want to walk around the building, and I understand I have to get permission for one part of the lot, I guess, through you, and go to somebody else for the other side?
Where exactly do they mean?
We want to be outside the building, and we set up, we plan on having food and a speaker, some singers, but we're going to actually do a walk around the building, around the courthouse.
And what day are you wanting to do this?
For June the 27th. We need it from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Is that a Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it at all whatsoever, I think it's a great deal. I don't know really, I have to see exactly where you're walking to understand what you're talking about. The actual, the first rows of the parking lot out here actually belong to the county, and the rest of that is technically city property.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
I have to go to the mayor's office to try to get the whole building. We want to walk around, one time around the building as the walk, but we'll be setting up tables, and we welcome other people to set up tables. What it is, is we're going to bring the community together, and we do that every three months. But this is geared, because we are a nonprofit ministry, we need to start raising money to continue to do this. So we're going to have a walk, which is going to be around the building, if I can get enough permission, and we would just do one lap, but they'll be singing, and we're still planning it for games, and it's just to bring this community together. And we're going to have it in other communities too, on the same day. But it's, we're in three different counties, or three different, yeah, we're in three different counties. It's what we do to bring events. So that's what I'm in the process of, is going into the different counties to get permission to have these.
You're basically going to have a mini fair where you have booths or tents set up to explain?
Well, not really a fair. No, we're not really going to have a lot of games. We talked about having cornhole tournament and donating the proceeds to the Recovery House in that community, but it's just going to be a walk. We're going to have one person in that community speak, and then we'll have singers. And the tables that I would like to have set up is like center stone, Recovery Houses, the roof house, celebrate recovery. It's, what we do is motivate, and we want that second stage to be there. So anybody that needs help, it's right in front of them, and they can make their decision on which way they need to be in their recovery.
You're also supportive of families of people who are going through?
Yes, we are geared to, at the events, and I'll leave a card, and the next time we're here is on the 18th. We have, at the events, and we're not doing this for the recovery walk, but we have parents of addicts, we have children of addicts speak, we have professionals come in, law enforcement, medics, drug and alcohol counselors. It's to show that addiction affects everybody, and that there's hope. And then even the family members, there's support groups for family members also.
Sounds like a very worthwhile cause.
Are you going to have the tables out in the parking lot, is that why you need it?
We'll set up in the parking lot, but the walk is going to be around the whole building. I still haven't figured out exactly where we're going to set up the tables. If we could get a lot of people to come and be a part of this, I would hope that we would have the whole area covered with people that want to come together for this. But it's still in process, and it's a couple of months out. So right now, we're getting permission, and this is the last county, the area that I need to get permission to have it, because we'll be in Richmond, Winchester, and Connersville that day.
Well, as far as around the building, we do have, I don't think you have to ask anybody else to walk around the building, but the parking lot, past those front two rows, does belong to the city, and if you're going to set tables up and use the parking lot, that you need to go to the mayor for. But to walk around the courthouse, I don't see that we'd have any problem with.
So if I think there's enough room to set up, call me in, because you have the backend?
Yes.
The only thing is, I don't get too close to the jail, because there are, there will be people in and out, families visiting and other things like that, so.
Well, and what about the grass area?
I don't have a problem with that.
Not for one day, that's not going to.
You'll make a motion?
I mean, if we needed some grass area, we could set up tables on that.
Sure.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve this, sounds like a very worthwhile cause, we certainly need all the positive things going on we can.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion in second to allow the Lord's Army, am I correct?
Yeah. It's Unchained Praises.
Unchained Praises on June 22nd?
27th. This is when we're here, I just want to give you information on what we do.
June 27th, use courthouse law for their activities, is there a question? Motion in second approved. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed? Three ayes. Thank you, appreciate it. It's the sheriff here. You're not on the agenda, but I know you have something, you seem to want to come on up?
I can't believe I actually hid.
Not very well.
No. Very quickly, our maintenance, or our contract with Spillman, which is our database that the city uses and the county, our police reports go in there, the jail maintenance reports, the cat and dispatches in there, that contract is up. They're requesting $19,352. We spoke a little bit before the meeting started, and where that comes out of, we're still not sure, so I believe that may be out of cum cap, but we'll talk to the council tonight about that. Just need your approval to move forward with that contract.
I've had a little bit of experience with this, this is something we absolutely have to have, it is sure a chunk of money.
It is, it is pricey.
This, just, and I like to tell the public what's going on, so just don't think we're approving things. The Spillman system is the joint law enforcement system between the city and the county, and it is a rather large system, and there are maintenance contracts that are signed each year for their service to the system. This $19,000 is only a third of the contracts. There's the same contract with Central Dispatch that is paid out of user fees, and then the city pays the same amount too. And then again, my understanding is that in November, they're wanting to do an update, am I correct? To almost $40,000?
Yes. And until all three agencies decide to look elsewhere and look at maybe a lower cost or a better system, to me, right now, it's kind of a have-to thing. But I did have some, I have talked with the other department heads a little bit about maybe looking at other databases, but as of right now, this is.
Well, I think that the 911 director and Michael King are going to a fair where there's a new system being presented by the state. However, when I was sheriff, I was in a meeting with a former chief, because he had objections then, wanted to move. Unless things have changed, my memory is not as good as I think it is. The information is proprietary, access to the information existing is proprietary. And when they dropped a million dollar figure on the chief, I thought we're going to do CPR on him. So those are things that have to be looked at to see if they're still the same or whatever, but.
And this system, it's working for us, we actually have it all on, all the road deputies have it on their laptops now, so they're able to do the reports out in the field, which obviously, as you know, the quicker you can get what just happened in a report, the better for court and things later. So the system is continuing to upgrade, and technology's upgrading with it, but the price is still, it's not changing.
Okay. I do agree with you, it's a necessity. Questions from the board, or any comments or motions?
When there's things that are necessity and requirements, there's not a whole lot you can do about things that are mandated by the government. You try to find the money. Do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, we do.
Or intake it from the council?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Second. Motion's made in second to approve the appropriations for the maintenance contract for Spillman system for the Sheriff's Department. Question? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
If I may, just, I know you guys are very busy this morning, but just wanted to update you guys on our inmate telephone contract. I had spoke with Commissioner Jackson a little bit about that, and Mr. Appel. We did decide to go with a new phone company, which is IC Solutions, which is based out of Missouri, switching over from Securus. Securus had been, actually, I believe, under Commissioner Jackson, when he was sheriff, first signed that contract. IC Solutions is going to provide inmate phones, and also, we're going to install inmate video visitation in each cell block. And the hope is with that, that we are going to decrease the actual in-person visitation at the jail, which will decrease our trafficking into the jail. So people, if they have a high-speed internet connection and a laptop, they can talk to their family member in jail back and forth. There's a cost associated with that, of course, and it will hopefully decrease that. It also will allow us to, the inmates will be able to order the commissary from the, the screen is actually about this big, and they'll be able to order commissary, which now they're doing on sheets, and it becomes very complicated for Ruth Massey, who takes care of that for us, her commissary. So it also has a prompt when people call in, they're calling in about bond information, which is anybody that's ever worked in the jail, you usually have about 10 to 20 of those phone calls a day, asking who got, if their loved ones in jail, what their bond is, when they can get out, all that, when they call this, once this new system's integrated, all that information will be available. None of our officers will be tied up doing that. So with 147 inmates, anything we can do to free our officers up to deal with those inmates is something that we're going to do. And the contract, as we discussed and talked about, was actually something that I did need approval from the commissioners, but I still wanted you guys to be aware of what was going on, and I think it's going to be a very beneficial thing to the Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff, is there a possibility at some time that they'll do initial arraignments by this method?
Hopefully, yes, yes. We have to get the judge on board there, but yeah, it would, there's a mobile device that's going to be available as well, and that will help with some of those, the arraignments. Hopefully, that will decrease, you know, there's times that our jail, our court officer's bringing back nine or 10 inmates back and forth to court by himself, and always some danger associated with that, so anything we can do to help him decrease the amount of inmates he has to bring back and forth over here would be great. So, yeah, there's a lot of possibilities, this is just the ground level, so, and they're going to come down, put on a two-day training, get us up to date, so a lot to learn for all of us.
If I'm available, give me a call, I'd like to sit in on some of that, Austin, remember it.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Parker, did you want to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to stand before you this morning and give a little report. I've officially completed my first year as Executive Director of Economic Development in Fayette County. It has been a very fast-paced year, lots of activity and lots of learning for me personally. I've taken 37 years of private corporate business experience and applied them to this new endeavor. Over the past year, I've met with and spent time with many local economic development officials, or Lidos for short, is what I am, I'm a Lido, from the other 91 counties in Indiana. I've attended several classes at Ball State University with my counterparts from the other 91 Hoosier counties. And I've seen firsthand that Fayette County is in the same boat as many of the other counties. We share some of the same disadvantages, we also share many of the same advantages. I wish that all the people in Fayette County could have been with me during this first year. I wish you could have seen what I've seen and heard what I've heard regarding economic development. My eyes have been open to the business of business attraction and business retention, and how it works. I've learned and experienced for myself that incentives work. work. It is not a sin against the Fayette County taxpayer to offer tax abatements. In fact, it's no different than you or I as we file our own personal income taxes, taking advantage of a deduction. If it's legal and we can do it, we take advantage of it. If you're a business owner and you can legally entertain a tax abatement, you do. I've learned that selling Fayette County assets is no different than selling any other product. The product must be packaged and promoted and sold like any other product, which involves selling, and to the hardest selling is relationship building. It is nearly impossible to sell anything of value without building a good, solid, genuine relationship first. During this first year, one of my many goals was to establish and enrich relationships that involve, the relationships at every point of contact for Fayette County economic development. In establishing and building those relationships, the process has allowed me to visit over one hundred Fayette County businesses last year and to hold many discussions with civic and elected leaders. This first year's been a rebuilding process for EDG, as the director position had been vacant for over two years. I'm thankful to the EDG board leaders and executive team who kept the process moving forward and welcomed me with many good projects as I began this most important work a year ago. So, I just wanted to let you know that this first year, I, some said I wouldn't make it, and, uh, I proved them wrong. I did make it, and it's been a, it's been fun at times, and it's been a little trying at other times, and I appreciate the support that the commissioners have given EDG more than you know, and I'm willing to answer any questions if you have any for me at this time.
Have you lost any hair or any hair color?
Well, the hair color's the same, but I have less of it now. As my grandchildren point out to me almost every time they see me, Papa, you don't have as much hair as you used to have. I, I'm not going to blame all that on EDG. I'm going to blame some of it on the grandkids.
EDG acts as, it's probably an oversimplification, but you act as a facilitator between the government, government entities and the business that we're trying to attract.
Exactly.
And, uh...
Or retain.
Or retain. And, uh, I think the last year has seen some advances. I think there's a lot more work to be done, and, uh, I will speak for the board here, we're willing to help in any way that we possibly can.
I appreciate that.
I wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done over the last year. Because anyone who says that they can do your job with their eyes closed is crazy. It's not easy. You've got people on one side of you and people on the other side pulling you in two different directions, and I've seen some of your challenges over the last year, and personally, I'm glad you stayed, and, because I think you're a good economic development director, sometimes you don't have all the tools you think you have, and you're always trying to play catch-up at the last minute, and if we've caused you any grief over the last year, I apologize.
It's, it's, it's been a learning experience. It's been a good experience for all of us.
I want to say thank you very much, Dan, for all that you've done this past year and for hanging in there.
Thank you, Leo.
It's good to have somebody from Fayette County representing Fayette County.
Well, you know, this is my hometown. I was born here. I love Fayette County. I love Connersville, and I want to see us go forward. I really do. I have a vested interest. I'm a taxpayer.
Yeah.
I'm not leaving. I'm staying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Have I missed any department heads or anybody like that? Okay, the next issue, or next on the agenda is patron concerns. I would suggest maybe we have a couple of different issues here to be addressed, so, uh, one, I think, is the Veterans Service Officer, and Craig, are you here to, to speak or just observe?
Just listen.
Okay, all right. So, uh, it was in the paper a couple of weeks ago, maybe, that there were complaints about our Veterans Service Officer, Mr. Bobby Smith. I have received phone calls and visits from numerous people, spontaneous visits or phone calls in support of him. I would like to do a little job description first. Number one, Mr. Smith is a part-time employee, which means he does not work forty hours a week. He does not receive benefits from the county. He's, the commissioners a couple of years ago, because of the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, Obamacare, as it's commonly called, we reduced the amount of hours a part-time employee could work to twenty-eight, so that we didn't have to pay benefits for that position. He is in that position. In addition, uh, he had some, I suppose it's okay to talk about your surgery, Bobby, but Bobby had some surgery, which required him to be laid up at home. He notified us plenty in advance. Uh, there were flyers on the door to his office, and I believe he notified the newspaper. I won't swear to that, but there was plenty of advance notice given to us. Now, if, if it were within our power, and I'll speak for the other two here, I think, I think we'd have the man or two people working part-time or one man working full-time to be able better to serve the veterans, because veterans served us, which is why we're able to sit here and have this discussion. I did ask Mr. Smith to come and talk to me. He was in my office yesterday. He brought a list of things that I will show here, and he also has a, a big desk calendar like this of phone logs and calls and et cetera, and this is a history or a summation of what he's done since the beginning of the year and last year and two thousand fourteen. So, having said that, if anyone wants to speak to this, uh, to this issue on Mr. Smith, we'll give you three minutes each, okay? And if you would, come up to the podium, give us your name, and tell us whatever you want to say. Mr. Worley.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Gene Worley. Uh, I'm not here to disrupt anything. I just want to make a comment. My experience is all I'm speaking for. I've had nothing but good luck with Mr. Smith. He's went out of his way to help me, and I know of others too, but speaking only for myself, I don't think we could do much better than Bobby Smith. His twenty-eight hours might be in the office, but I know he gives a lot more hours than that at home, answering phones, doing phone calls. He even makes trips to veterans who can't make it to the office. He goes on his own to that. He's done wonders for me. My records were destroyed in a fire back in sixty-three, I believe it was, in St. Louis, so what I'm, what he's doing with me, we're trying to go over those records and what few I have left and contact the VA and see what, what I have and what I haven't got, but he's done yeoman's service, and I was shocked when I saw in the paper that there was a movement against him. I can't speak for those people. Maybe they have a legitimate complaint. Mine, I have no complaint. I think he's done a great job, and I think we need to keep him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Lingel?
Well, I'm Mr. Leroy Lingel. I voiced my support for him in the last meeting, and since my name showed up in the paper, uh, two people approached me and gave me their names, and as far as that petition was, one person said she did not sign that petition, but her name's on it, and the other lady said that she signed the petition, but she was lied, she couldn't, I guess the petition was passed out during a party or something, and you know how people get when they get to drinking and stuff. She said that she was lied to about what the petition was, and she admits that she signed the other lady's name, so as far as all the names on that petition, you're going to have to figure out which ones are real, which ones are put down falsely. So, I don't know what kind of backstabbing they planned on doing, but it's all wrong. And if you would like, I'd give you these dates. I'm not going to say them out loud.
Yes, please. Anyone else, George?
My name's George Gattinger. I'm not here to drag this thing out either, except to say how much Bobby has helped me and how, when I walked over and seen him, he got me on there, had me fill out some papers that he filled out on the computer right then and there. I had to go home and get my tax papers or something printed in. By the time I got back there, he entered that in. By the time I got home, I got a call from the VA in Dayton setting up an appointment, and from what I have heard from some of the guys up at Richmond that actually logged you in and so forth, they compliment Bobby up one side and down the other, and again, the only problem we've got with Bobby would be that he doesn't have somebody to help him do the work, a secretary to help man the phones, because that man does so much work for so many people that people don't have any idea what's going on, and it takes time to fill out that paperwork and get everything right. If you don't get it right, you've got problems, so, thank you.
You're not saying that the government makes things complicated, are you? I just wanted to be clear on that.
All that's version commissioners.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Seismar?
Jim Seismar, um, on behalf of Mr. Smith. He has helped me a great deal. I've been in the office several times, where he's also helped other veterans in the course of that, and he's exemplary on his work, and he does a great job. He's helped me to understand it and got me through everything, so he does a good job.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
My name's Paulie Isaac. I just want to, I'm here to support Bobby a hundred percent. He's treated me, uh, first class, and I have absolutely no complaints against him. I can't see where anybody else was either. Uh, I think he's treated everybody fairly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Seismar, Ms. Seismar. Mrs. Ailes. Sorry.
My voice is low, dear. Okay. I have a son-in-law that works for the VA in Indianapolis, and my husband had passed away, you know, about five years, and he was a veteran, and, um, so they kept telling me I should try for help, because it seems like everything, it was broken, it was either broke or tore or something. We've been at this, this home for such a long time, and we had a roof, a roof blown off, and they said I would go to the VA and see if there was any help at all, and I went down there thinking nothing, and honestly, little Bobby, he just, he just knocked himself out to help me, and he said all, I was blessed, because all of the, my husband's work was in order, and I, I probably should have been getting help before. I never asked for, but it was no time. He, he had something coming in for me, and they come in at times of help on my roof and repair this and put in a new furnace, and kindness, nobody could want a kinder person than him, and he's told about two ladies that they wasn't eligible, and he said they really need help, and he said, "I'll still keep trying to look for them," but I never met a finer person than him. We don't want Lucy. We don't. I do thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ailes. I have known Mrs. Ailes since, uh...
Long time.
I was in the cradle, I think, so, and her husband was a fine man. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Sandra Flowers, and, um, the night that petition was put out and told about was the night that they invest, they had a van, good-sized crowd, lots of people drinking, and we were told just to sign it. It was somebody, uh, in the office wasn't doing their job, and as I was reading it, the bartender said, you know, "It's nothing big, just somebody not doing their job, you know, just sign it," so I signed it, and she says, "Then just go ahead and sign your, it's not a girl's name," and with her permission, I did it, not knowing who we were signing against, but come to find out it was someone in the family. So, maybe petitions should be, um, told what they're about more, maybe in different places other than clubs where people drink and party, um, but we did sign, not knowing who it was, and come to find out it was family. So, I'm here to speak on Bobby's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. It should be noted that, it should be noted that there has been no formal petition presented to us. It was reported a couple of weeks ago that, uh, the people at the newspaper interview thought that they would be here at this meeting, but they have not shown up that I'm aware of.
When you spoke the last time, yeah, when you spoke the last time, can you get up and speak again? Yeah. That way we can have it on record.
Marion Dowrable, Lawrence Township trustee.
You spoke on Bobby's.
Yes, I spoke on Bobby's behalf at our last meeting, I believe. You want me to speak again on the same, same subject?
If you would, please.
Uh, well, uh, I'm a veteran from the Vietnam War, served from sixty-six to seventy, never had any use, or let me rephrase that, never had any need for a veterans officer until about a couple of years ago, when things started going wrong that I believe is related to Agent Orange, and also I've had a little bit of hearing loss, and I have, however, it's pronounced tinnitus. I pronounce it that way, and I have this terrible ringing in my ear that never ceases, and so I went and sat down with, made a phone call. I couldn't catch Bobby in his office. He was out doing things, made a phone call. Bobby set up a time for me to come and see him, uh, and since that time, he has been available and has assisted me on every need that I have, and has done a walk, you know, my personal opinion, like Mr. Worley's, has done an outstanding job in his office. I do not believe that the county affords Bobby Smith enough time to do his job. Uh, I think that, like you said, Mr. Commissioner, that we're all sitting here because of the veterans who has made this all possible, so, uh, to represent and service those veterans correctly, you know, it should be a full-time job. It should be, or if not a full-time job, enough assistance for Bobby, uh, an automobile. Bobby goes to veterans' homes. Bobby drives to the VA in Dayton, Ohio. He goes to the VA in Richmond, Indiana, and there are a lot of veterans from previous wars, World War II, Korean War, who can no longer get out, drive. Bobby goes to their houses. You know, there's, there's just, I, this is from my personal experience, and, you know, if the county, you know, we just spent sixty thousand dollars for some maintenance hardware, which sounds outrageous, but we can't afford... outrageous, but we can't afford to help our veterans enough to have a full-time officer or an automobile or a gas card. All of that comes out of his pocket. I won't say all, but most. So those are my opinions.
Thank you, Marion.
Thank you, Zane.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Was there a name on the petitions that were submitted?
As I said, we don't, we have not yet received a petition.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I didn't see them.
No, we do not have one yet. If and when it is, it will be made public in some manner of public record.
Okay, thank you.
I want to read this real quick. January 20th, January of 2015, so this, I believe this is for the month of January. Bobby Smith interviews, office appointments were 14, walk-ins were four, telephone calls incoming were 46, telephone calls outgoing were 46-plus, one viewing and funerals or hospitals and so on. January through December of 2014 was 249 appointments, 57 walk-ins. Bobby stays busy, whether, you know, and as Commissioner Jackson said, we were unaware of Bobby's absence, we were. Bobby came to us and said, hey, I can't, and we approved it, and we didn't feel that we, you know, he did, I think he did put it in the paper, but we didn't think it would cause this much of a backsplash, that people would say he was never there. From what I understand, even when Bobby was laid up for a while, he was still working at home, while he was, after he got out of, out of the hospital. So, you know, that's all I understand about him.
I would, I would like to point out that simply because he's not in his office doesn't mean he's not working. I, the commissioners have an office here that has never been used for that first year we opened it up. I'm in here probably on average four days a week, and I'm not always in my office. Now occasionally, I am across the street eating, but that's my favorite, favorite pastime. But other than that, I do do some work. I talk to, I talk to elected officials, I talk to appointed officials, I talk to taxpayers, et cetera. So simply because he's not there doesn't mean he's not working. And if there's no one else that wants to address this issue, if there is, please say so now. I'm going to let Mr. Smith speak for a few moments. Bobby?
First of all, I want to thank everybody. I certainly appreciate it. I'm somewhat surprised. I know we spoke some of you on the phone, but not this many. I want to say I truly, truly appreciate the kind words and just the kindness that's been shown here today to me. Can I read this?
Okay.
This is a report of the County Veteran Service Officer. It's information to the public as well as Fayette County Commissioners. I provided this yesterday and along the way these last couple of weeks to Mr. Jackson, our Commissioner, and I'm sure Zane and Ms. King's been afforded the opportunity to look. I submit that following as a report of information concerning the Fayette County Veteran Service Office. The office has been provided a yearly budget of funding to work and operate as a one-person, part-time position, allowing 25 to 28 hours per week. The County Veteran Service Officer works within this approved amount of time by conducting personal interviews, scheduled office appointments, walk-ins, incoming and outgoing telephone calls, out-of-office interviews and appointments to include house calls, nursing homes, hospitals, and funeral services. The County Veteran Service Officer is required by Indiana Department of Veteran Affairs to be accredited through the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers and to complete a minimum of 16 hours of continued education each year to maintain this accreditation. The County Veteran Service Officer is also required to be a member of the Indiana Veteran Service Officer Organization. From January 2015, as Zane pointed out, Commissioner Zane, from January 2015 through March of 2015, the County Veteran Service Office has been open 155 hours. This reflects the month of February, which the office was not open due to the County Veteran Service Officer having required medical treatment and physical therapy, which was approved by the Fayette County Commissioners prior to the time of surgery and the required FMLA paperwork was completed. The County Veteran Service Office had 55 new or ongoing veterans in office appointments for the purpose of new or continued application for service connection claims. Also had incoming and outgoing telephone calls of over 204 during this timeframe. As a reminder, the County Veteran Service Officer for the year of 2014 worked 1,189 hours and conducted 249 new service connection claims and over 57 walk-ins. The number of telephone calls were many, but the Indiana Department of Veteran Affairs stopped requesting this information, and those calls were not documented. December of 2014 was a very busy and interesting month. By way of Boy Scout Troop Number 166 and the Giving Tree Program, they assisted veterans and their families with Christmas gifts. Those were delivered to the office, the County Veteran Service Office, and then the veterans were contacted to stop and pick up the boxes of gifts. And I want to again thank Troop Number 166 for this. Through the Richmond, Indiana Medical Clinic for Veterans, they donated 15 to 15 Fayette County Veterans families full meal boxes for four to six for each family. In December of 2014, the County Veteran Service Office submitted for six veterans through the Military Family Relief Fund, it's a state fund that is given, applications for grants to be approved for veterans in need. All six veterans were approved for this fund, which added to more than $10,000 given to these veterans and grants. Currently, the County Veteran Service Office has 10 projected in-office veteran appointments for the month of April. The County Veteran Service Office is on an appointment basis approved by the Commissioners, which has worked for most individuals. To contact, contact, the telephone number is 825-8412. I could actually go on. A lot of you know, because I work with you, not on a daily basis, but I work with you often. I could point out situations, and some of you got up and spoke. You didn't tell the whole story. What I mean is, there was so much that you earned or your spouse earned, and I take it that way. When I say I have a veteran, I take veterans very personal, because I am a veteran. I served 21 years in the United States Air Force. I've served in Vietnam. I was in Thailand as well. To get nominated for this position in 2012 in Passa, there was a committee of about eight to 12, and they nominated me for this position through the Fayette County Council, who then approved me and gave my name to the Commissioners at that time. At that time, I was informed that I would have 20 to 25 hours per week, and now it's up to 28 hours per week, and I'm thankful for that. And I know the auditor don't want to hear this, but at least that office, I work many more than 28 hours a week. I put time in on Saturdays and Sunday afternoons. I'm really not here to defend myself, other than to say that I'm available, even for those that signed the petition. They're veterans. I honor those veterans. Please come and see me. I know this is being recorded, and the Commissioners, I've already shared with them. Anyone can come to my office. Call me. I don't like veterans. I could choose a couple of you here and give an example. If you're in my office and there's two or three veterans sitting in the hallway, I try not to do that. Rarely is there a veteran sitting in the hallway waiting for the position to come in and a tear. I just don't like people having to wait. That's why, another reason for appointments. And I again want to thank the Commissioners for listening to me. We've had several meetings. I've passed on information. I thank everybody here. I probably ought to quit, because I do tear up. I sat over there, had to wipe away some tears, because the kind words has been presented here today, and I thank you. Questions or answers?
Bobby?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank everyone here for their service, for giving us the freedom to do what we choose to do.
Thank you, Zane.
Number two, it is showing support today for your ability to do your job, that I would willfully request that all the, I'm going to say it, slanderous remarks towards you as a person and towards you as a Veterans Affairs Officer, stop immediately, because I've not heard one person here today say they don't want you around, okay? And so on and so forth. And that's just my request, and I think you're doing a heck of a job, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Zane. I appreciate that support.
I agree. One last matter. We, Commissioners will start making an effort to communicate with the veterans councils. I don't know if I'm using the proper words for the different organizations, and giving him a, excuse me, giving them an example of the information we just received. Joyce, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Please. I saw you come in, but I'm sorry, I got distracted.
That's okay. We had talked earlier about a local contractor that was to provide documentation for Workman's Comp.
Yes.
We had sent a certified letter to him, and they, we do have documents that, where he did receive certified letter. This was regarding for him to get in touch with us as soon as possible, and that if he did not respond to us, I think it was by the 1st of April, that we know that he does not have the documentation that is required. I also, because I was hoping the attorney would be here, I have also, here's a copy of the legal advertisement for bids. This is notice to bidders, which it does state in here that Workman's Comp is part of this project, and they do have to provide that. Now, if there is a statement that if it is a sole proprietor, they do not have to have Workman's compensation, but he does have to have a certificate from the State of Indiana saying that he is not required to have Workman's Comp. And so that's why we have, of course, these bids were, came in in December, and we have constantly giving him and, you know, approaching him at least once a week to encourage him to get this certificate. Now, he did give us documentation, he did file for it, and I know that some of this is maybe out of his hands, because it is the state having to give him that certificate. But we're at the point to where we do need to move on with these two projects, and he was awarded two projects, two addresses. So I guess we're recommending that since he did not contact our office at all after notification of the letter, that we move on with those two addresses. We do have three new participants. We have one participant that was bid out last time that did not receive any bids. We've adjusted the scope of work a little bit, so we're, we're hoping within the next two to three weeks that we could bid those four out, since there were multiple bidders that bid on the two addresses that was awarded to this contractor. And since the 60-day, those bids were only good for 60 days, I think we need to bid, rebid these two addresses out again. So I'm hoping that we can put those all together, so we would have a total of six to rebid out.
Do you first need for us to remove him, or is that something we do? Is that something you two do on your own?
Now, you would have to either resend the award, so I can, you want me to give you the two addresses? Or if you want to, I was hoping to be able to contact your attorney prior to this meeting. Maybe you want that to him to look at it, to review it, to, you know, make sure.
I would, yes.
Yes. And maybe you could resend those with his approval. But that could be something that maybe you would want to resend at the next meeting.
So the reason is that he hasn't filed for Workman's Comp or showed that he's exempt from Workman's Comp by, from the state?
Correct.
And you've sent him certified letters requesting that, and he has not replied?
Right.
Let's do it this way, it doesn't make any difference, okay? Why don't you, he should be, our attorney should be back from his funeral leave, probably end of this week, first or next week. If you will call him and contact him.
I had requested his contact information, but I do not know how to get in touch with him.
I'll give you this number.
Okay.
And then if you will, could we put her on, could you come to our next meeting?
Yes.
If you'll put her on the agenda, please. And we'll get this taken care of at the next meeting, okay? I'm going to write this down for you. Try his office number first. If he can't get a hold of it, maybe we can try that out. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anything else to come before the board? It's been faxed, we're waiting on a reply, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other presentations? Anything else to bring before the board? If not, the, I will entertain a motion to approve the claims and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the payroll and the second question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Three ayes.
And a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, the second, to adjourn, question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And adjourn.